The regular meeting of the Eastland City Commission is September sixteenth. I ask Richard to lead us in a prayer and Savannah to lead us in the pledge. Richard?
Pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this wonderful day that you have given us to this wonderful community. For the good of this community and for the people. And God, we just ask you to be with us tonight. In all that we do, we ask it then your son, Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Our pleasure to lead us in the flag in the United States of America into the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, our pleasure to lead us in the city, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I just wanted to introduce Savannah Fartenberry, our new city manager. Welcome to Eastland, young lady.
Hi, thank you, thank you.
Nothing on public comment. Approve the minutes of the August nineteenth, September tenth, and September twelfth meetings. You'll copy those in front of you, entertain a motion when you're ready.
I wasn't here for the, to attend.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Dennis mentioned each set, August tenth.
August nineteenth.
Oh, I'll get on the bus. August nineteenth, September tenth, and September twelfth.
Motion from Carol.
A second motion.
Second from Carol to approve the minutes of August nineteenth, September tenth, and September twelfth. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carried. Financial report, Leslie.
I'm getting caught up gradually. Hopefully you'll have, you'll have them all before.
Get the audit out of the way, huh?
Yes, sir.
Is that still on task for Friday?
I, that's our.
Twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars above last year total for the year. Total sales tax for the year was two million point zero nine three one eight six. Outstanding, outstanding. Anything we need to know about the report so far? It looks good.
Now, if the figures rock along.
Okay. We now have Mr. Tom Beatty, Eastland Economic Development Biannual Report.
Yes, sir.
Pretty handout.
Appreciate you allowing me to be here. There's a handout in your folder that Ron ran off for everybody, which is the same as the slides up here, so. But first of all, I want to show you, this is our billboard out here by the football stadium. I don't know if you noticed that or not, but we've got a gentleman who has come into town in Nicholas Petroff and has spent several million dollars on projects and they're ongoing and it's really pretty amazing. And he found us from our billboard. And so he got that and looked us up and we made communication and showed him around and, you know, it shows advertising does pay against Ron Bullman, that's pretty neat. So if you haven't seen the billboard, go ahead and look at that, okay? Sure, thank you. This is the business park. It's not really that color, but this shows kind of what's available, what's sold and what's not. But it started out with ninety-two acres out there. We did acquire eight and a half more for what was called a patent property. They gave us about a hundred acres. Barti Metals is down here, if that gives you a point of reference. You have Santa Gravel right there, Full and Whiter's over here. And then, but the main thing I wanted to show you is we've got a lot of land out there. We've got a lot of that has to be leased, but a lot of it can be sold. And if you can see this blue one just beyond that, that's the railroad. So the property goes all the way to the railroads. Part of what I want to show you is what's going on, but then part of what I will show you is the opportunities that we have. And we do have a lot of opportunities. So we've got a lot of land there. All the services are in, streets are in. Last year, we paved the main street going down in there, a big concrete street that's getting a lot of use. We've had a lot of some pipe companies, you know, that store and stage pipe for pipelines. And they have been leasing space from us out there. They pay us thirty-five hundred dollars a month. It's been a real good deal. So anyway, they're gonna move out pretty soon, but we've kind of got the word out that we've got a location for that type of business. So I feel like we'll get some more until we need it for something else. Okay, sorry, I made a gesture there. Go ahead, Terry. This is our land out by the airport. The, we have these lots that where it says A, B, and C, that lot A is sold. That's where Maverick Logistics is. In the upper left corner, that's where Barti, uh, Baptiste Mendel Byra, Myra Industries is. But I want to show you that we have a lot of land still up there. We've got about twenty-six acres that's adjacent to the airport, to the runway that can be developed. I've shown it to several people. Part, part of the folks want to look at it, like the place to build a hangar with an office in it, it'd be kind of neat. Uh, we've shown it to a couple of folks and gone and talked to people that are in the aviation industries that, you know, make airplanes and work on airplanes or do various things. But this is a pretty unique piece of property being adjacent to the airport. And we go all the way to the runway, which is kind of neat. Okay, Terry. Uh, this is another picture of that same property looking kind of towards the east. This to the, where the grass is, basically, that's our property. Go to the next one, Terry, it shows it a little better, I think. This is our property out there. Here's Maverick Logistics over here, the airport terminal over there, and you see the runway and all that. We own all this land over to the left and back towards Mike. This is Mike Baptiste's corner right here, if that gives you a frame of reference. We've actually got an easement here to the road. We've got an easement to the driveway. We've got a county road over there, so it could, it has a lot of possibilities. Pretty excited about that. But we're not gonna give it away. It's gotta be the right folks. You know, we've had people want to come in, put in storage buildings and stuff like that, that doesn't create any jobs. We kind of explain to them that's not, we have other places where I'd like to show them for that. This, that's not what this is about. This really needs to take advantage of the aviation industry and so forth. If you, and also, if you've never been to the airports out there and looked at the terminal building and all, it's amazing. It's beautiful. If you've never seen it, maybe you might take the time, go out and do that. Okay, Terry. Uh, this is Barti Metals Fab Shop. Uh, we worked with him on this project. This is where they actually make red, red iron steel bolt-up buildings, that sort of thing. They leased this building from us on a lease purchase basis. Uh, that's, they, I don't know how many they employ in this building, probably a dozen or so from what I've seen out there. So that's pretty neat. They can build, build, you know, the whole thing now. They can sell the sheets, they can sell the steel, they can sell the package building, the whole deal. Okay? This is, I mentioned Nicholas, Nicholas Petroff. Uh, this is one of his projects. This is the old Stanley property or the Full and Whiter Dodge, depending on when you moved here, what you call it, I think. But it's right next to Stanley Ford and between Stanley Ford and Walmart. Does that make sense, everybody? And Mr. Petroff has already, his engineer draw this up and he has purchased it. Pardon?
Sail Barn property.
The Sail Barn, yeah, yeah, if you want to go way back. Then anyways, the old Sail Barn's right here, right there. And then what he's done, he's already talked to Walmart about cross-access between his property and Walmart. They're all for that because it makes it their place safer. Right now, they've only got one entrance in and that's by the gas pump. So if they have a fire at the gas pump, they got a problem. So they realize the value of that, plus, you know, just keeping shoppers in the neighborhood longer. But he's gonna, his plans at this point are to tear down the building instead of there. The metal building, the old Sail Barn building, the whole deal and just start over. And it's gonna be a big project. Part of the thing that I really like about this is right down the middle of it, you can see the intersection right here. The plan is to run a street all the way to the top of that property. And that's where the EDI and the city may get involved at some point to, because that would open up about two hundred acres of land back in there that right now is isolated for development. Uh, when they sold off all that property along the highway, the Ford, all those folks, they didn't keep an access to all that property. Rob King owns all that property and the Massengill family owns all this over here. But it, but it's critical to have that road up through there, not only years down the road. It may be five years, maybe twenty years, but at some point, something's going in out there. You know, whether it's a school or, I mean, whatever. And this is an opportunity to, to get to it, to make the connections. This is real, real important. So anyway, okay, Terry. This is a bunch of dirt, obviously, but this is out by the, here again, Warner subdivision, the, the old rent division, the, I don't know what it, if there was a church out there. The crisis center is right, right over there to the left. This is behind the clinic building. This is a residential area, but it's also business. There, the appraisal district's building a new building over here. That's a terrible picture, I apologize, but it's hard to get a picture of a big hole with dirt. Anyway, there, we have one, if you need. But anyway, with, uh, there again, Nicholas Petroff has bought this property. He's gonna develop it into a residential area, plus the business property that'll be on both sides of this road. And that's why we're involved, because it is, it is a business street. Uh, we're helping put in some of the utilities out there that EDI has. So we're not helping develop the real estate, um, the residential area. We're just trying to make an entrance into where opens up that part of the world. Yes, sir.
That's, we're looking north right here, right?
Yes.
Did you say there's gonna be business on both sides, on the east side?
There could be. Right, right now, the plan is to have it on the west side. And, but this is open land for whatever develops, so.
I thought it was already planted for residential housing. Where are the houses?
It is, they, all the rest of that, back in there where the trees are, uh, towards your street that cuts through, back to the, as you're going down your street to the left. So like Wesley Court is down to the right, you know, that's where the Methodist Church parsonage is. All of that's available for development. Uh, and this is planted for residential, but it just, you know, who knows what it'll end up being. But the rest of, all the rest of that, it's twenty-some acres, it's all planted for residential. It's a lot of lots, a lot of lots. But that, that being said, if somebody says, hey, you know, we want to, right behind, uh, what's his name that builds houses?
Weaver.
Weaver, Nick, uh, yeah, Weaver lives right there. Somebody wants that first lot across from the, the crisis center to build a dentist office or something, you know? It's, that's front and his group is like a zoning, look at it from a zoning standpoint.
And we're actually working on creating a new zoning designation that would work with, uh, to be near residential that wouldn't open it up for like a tire shop or a gas station to go there, but for an instance like that, we're looking more for like an eight to five Monday through Friday, you know, dentist office, law office, that type of thing. Uh, but that has not, and we're still in the process of creating that and working with P and Z and that will be coming to y'all in the near future.
Okay, Terry. Uh, this is ribbon cutting at Veterans Garage Door. This is, this is Kirk right here with the, the big guy with the scissors, uh, cutting the ribbon. They have a, a location here in Eastland now. They have one in, uh, Weatherford and their big one in Abilene. They're, they're a really nice sized company. They have a lot of employees. About half of these are their employees, about half's Chamber. Chamber did a great job with the ribbon cutting. Appreciate some of the business folk coming out for that. That's the type of project we do. They actually manufacture doors, which makes it legitimate for us to do the.
Where is that?
It's in.
Next to Sonny.
Yeah, Mark McClure's building.
Mark McClure's building, yeah, yeah, I couldn't leave it at that.
Real thin and long.
What?
The real thin and long building.
Where you get established, people will call and come out and you look at, go look at the side. Probably won't be a lot of in and out traffic right there. But it's a pretty good sized shop area. Okay, Terry, is that it? What we got? Oh, the Hellcombers. That's, that's like a picture, I think it's kind of cool. I think it's neat what you have here. But also, they're one of our customers. They, we, uh, EDI actually owns the property where they have their hangar. So they leased that from us for eighteen hundred dollars a month and then we can put that back into other projects. So it, it really is relevant, believe it or not, so. What else we got, Terry? Is that it? Oh, this is really kind of weird. This is a piece of property out next to Red Star. Red Star's over here to the left, that's their parking lot right there.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, EDI, well, they own this piece right here. EDI owns these two pieces up here. It's kind of weird, it's kind of in the creek, but it could be for like a billboard location or just something that doesn't need much space, but needs a good location. Not gonna drive through coffee place or something. It's a, it's not an extremely valuable piece of property, but we do loan it, so I'll make, let you know that.
Is that outlined in red?
Yes, outlined in red, yes ma'am. Half of it's, there's two lots, the one on the right's out of the city limits, one on the left's in the city limits, but it's one contiguous piece of property, kind of weird.
Doesn't it flood there?
Ma'am?
Does it flood there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, only when it rains. Yeah, it does.
Rains a lot.
Ideally, ideally, if you really want to do something, you'd, you'd get the dirt from up there and pull it this direction and create a pad. But you'd be limited because you can't bring in dirt because of the flood plain and all that stuff. It, it has very limited use, but, but it's ours and I want to show it to you. There we go. Terry? That's just another, that shows where that is in relation to the on-ramp. You know, I mean, for the right thing, it's a cool piece of property, but I don't know, maybe houseboat sales or something? Okay.
Waiters.
That's it.
Yeah, waiters, yeah. Terry, I think that's it, isn't it?
That's it.
Okay. Anyway, we've got lots of projects going on, lots of enthusiasm in town, lots of residential stuff coming down the road. We've got businesses, we've got a little bit of industry and pretty excited about everything, so. Any questions on that?
Yes, sir, well, great job.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions, Tom?
Do a very good job.
Great work, what you guys do and keep it up. Right. Public hearing again. Six sixteen, public hearing of P and D case twenty-four dash zero zero two, rezoned parcel to C two commercial for development parcel, number six three zero one two, corner Bill Street and I twenty access road. Legal description is John House slash Bowles, PT of LT three, A B dash one fifty-nine triangle T R, Eastland, Eastland County, Texas, and that means something to somebody. Tony?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, uh, this piece of property belongs to the, uh, the La Quinta property. That's right across from Bill Street. It's all, uh, it's all owned by the same individual and, or individuals. And they are wanting to, uh, do some development on this little triangle piece of property there. However, our current zoning, the way it's on there is it's half ag open, half C two commercial. So with that, the problem is, is that ag open is only allowed for basically everything that C two is not and C two is allowed for everything that ag open is not. So it's, it's just, they don't jive with each other. Can't have, basically can't have the same thing on both of those. So what they're asking for is to basically have the property zoned uniformly, so it's all C two, so that it can all be used for a commercial use. And their plan is to, uh, place a little restaurant there that would basically, uh, play off of the hotel and also be available for the citizens of Eastland.
What is the current zoning, officer?
It is half ag open, half, uh, C two. Whenever zoning was put in place, somehow this piece of property had it just exactly in half on both. And I don't know if you guys have the handout in your packet? If not, I can bring it to you.
We've got a deal back here, number fourteen, but.
It's, it, that's the ordinance for this. Yeah. Here, I'll bring, I'll bring you my little packet here so you can see. Do they have it?
They have it.
Well, I'm assuming these, I mean, I mean, make sure that we're all against.
It may not be now.
Okay, so here's a piece of property, it's colored in yellow, as you can see, it's zoned, the C two.
And ag open brings about exactly half of that property. La Quinta's right here, so it's right, they, the same people own this big lot here, this, and actually Bill Street is theirs too. It's not, it's their private drive and that's theirs as well.
So. Yeah, so what they're, all they're asking for is to have it all, all C two commercial. That way it's always on the same thing and they can allow that to.
So the part that, let me see the picture again, the part that's yellow is what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, that's the parcel itself, so as you can see.
So what we're actually.
Yes.
Yes, right, this will still be.
This is the Bowles property, this is not. Yes, sir, yes, sir. So that's, that's off of Google Earth right there, but it's, it's showing you a clearer picture of where that little triangle is. So that's all they're wanting is just to have a cohesive zoning throughout the property to make use of it. Yeah. And we're all for, like Tom, we're all for development as well.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we'll vote for it.
I mean, I'm pushing it.
I'll allow five minutes for public hearing, so that's why I'm waiting for another minute. Anybody have anything else, anybody here in the public?
The Seem Brothers were gonna try to make it here today, but they're currently moving from Seattle here to Eastland to live. So they're in the process of bringing all of their, their stuff down here. Close up shop up there. The brothers that are bet on this.
Okay, nothing further. We'll close the public hearing at six twenty-one. Now, item number eight, the board of city commission will discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion consideration of EDI fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four, the amended budget.
I got a little overeager here, sorry. Um, you should have a sheet in your folder that looks like this.
Yeah.
And what this is, this, this topic, what we want now is a motion to amend our current budget that we're in the end of to reflect what actually happened through the year. We really have no idea who's gonna drive up and want to spend money or get money. You know, we didn't know we were gonna be building a street this time last year. We didn't know that Veterans Garage Door was coming. You know, it's really kind of a shot in the dark for us to know who's gonna make a request of us because we don't know what businesses are gonna open. Sometimes we can prepare, as I'll show you here in a second. But basically, this is just kind of a cleanup budget to reflect, make everything balance and reflect what actually happened. In other words, on the income on that four thousand city sales tax, we budgeted six hundred and thirty-three thousand one twenty-eight, but we actually, I'm sorry, I backwards. We budgeted six oh five four eighty-eight, but we took in six thirty-three three one twenty-six. But, you know, we just don't know who's gonna stop and spend money, so. Uh, the lease income, same deal, we budgeted twenty-one thousand six hundred and then the pipe people showed up. And so, you know, that changed our, our lease, that twenty-one six hundred, that was just mostly Barti. And then, so anyway, we, we didn't turn them away. But anyway, we've got some other income there, but, uh, you can see that our actual number was considerably larger than our budget number. Does that make sense? So that, that's what this is talking about, is this, this amendment is just to make everything continue balancing and more accurately reflect what happened last year. For instance, if you look there, uh, fifty-three twenty-seven Woodlands Road, that's the road, the dirt pile I showed you earlier. We didn't budget anything because we didn't know we were gonna build a street. We have currently built, uh, spent eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, which a lot of that's engineering. But if you'll notice, the amended is two hundred and thirty thousand. By the end of this month, with what they're doing out there, we will have spent about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars this fiscal year on that project. Does that make sense? We haven't spent that yet, but our budget goes through in September. So we called, prayed on and asked them how much more they were gonna bill us for this month. We got that number and plugged it in. So that two hundred and thirty thousand is the amended number, which will get us to the next fiscal year. And you'll see in a minute when we look at next year, the carryover of that street. Does that make sense? We really wanted to pay for what was done this year, we want to pay it this year instead of just having it hanging out there. Uh, you can just go down through there and I'll be glad to answer any questions on some of these. Some of these like, uh, six oh one six, business park development. We budgeted a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, or a hundred and ninety-six thousand nine eighty-eight. We spent practically nothing on that, so we're taking that line item and moving it up and that's where that two thirty comes from. Does that make, I don't want to over explain this, y'all understand. I used to teach elementary school, in fact, I just had to go over and over. I'm sorry, I don't have little finger pockets.
Are you insane, you waiting?
I just don't know, I don't know when to quit explaining it and when to shut up and let you go. Uh, one other unanticipated expense we had, we did a, had a gentleman come in and did a survey for us. We brought in citizens to identify needs and goals and dreams and all that sort of thing. Five thousand dollars in the budget to pay him. So, you know, there, that's where some of this, like the marketing, you know, went from twenty-two thousand to thirty-two thousand. That's where we got ten thousand of it. And then up here at the top, we moved some around to get the other fifteen. So anyway, I'm over explaining it, Shirley, can I just sit down? Any questions on that?
How much did Mike Barnes cost you?
Twenty-five thousand.
On your estimate for the road, you've got two hundred and thirty thousand dollars you spent. What do you estimate that road's gonna cost?
Three, about three thirty.
Three thirty?
Yes, sir, it's a six bid.
Yeah. Pretty good size, right?
And it's not just the road, it's all the utilities, it's the, you know, the really utilities are. I think they're about ten feet deep right now and some of their digging, they had to put in a little, whatever it's called, so it doesn't cave in. That's how deep they are, you know? Short of a box, yeah. And that slows them down because they gotta move the box and then work in the box and keep moving the box. But they're so deep, it's worried about them caving in on them, so.
It's the best thing you can do, though.
You don't want it to, we appreciate it, yeah, yeah.
It's not fun to be dug out.
No, it, it's, it's, it could be a very tragic situation. So, anything else on that?
Anybody have anything else for Tom? Thank you again, sir.
You bet.
Don't go anywhere. Item number two, uh, do we need to accept that budget?
Yes.
We need to do that. All right, and that item, we need to, uh, accept the budget amendments for economic development, entertain a motion.
I still move. Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Make a motion to approve the one economic development, amended two thousand twenty-four budget.
Motion from Carol.
Second.
Second from Richard, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item number two, discuss consideration of fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five, Eastland Economic Development.
Okay. I think you have in your budgets, in your folder, one that says F Y E twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
And mayor asks us to come up with it, with one that shows, instead of this year's budget, this is actually the one, uh, instead of this year's budget compared to next year's budget, show the actual budget, you know, like we just.
Well, the amended, what we did.
The amended, yes, sir. So what you've got there that I just passed out is the amended budget compared to the proposed budget. And, and here we can see there, then there's a hundred thousand for this, this coming year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, I asked a question, I was gonna go look.
It was a great question and I apologize for not having.
No, you got there right there, you did good.
The city sales tax, we use the number that the city has anticipated on that. Uh, we've got six fourteen four forty-two, which would be up nearly ten thousand dollars. Uh, we've got lease income of fifty-two thousand, that would be Castle, Barti, and Arabak. Uh, Castle will be moving out in a couple of months. Interest income is five thousand. We do have the bulk of our money in an interest-bearing account. I think it's paying a little five percent right now, which really makes a lot of difference. Interest expense down at the bottom is our budget, it's five thousand dollars in interest. So it's kind of neat to be receiving interest and not just paying interest.
Yeah.
I'll be glad to go through this and, I don't want to over explain it again, I would press.
I move with you, I move with you. Hang on just a second.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask about the business park, if it's a, an added amount for the fiscal year, is that, uh?
What is the number, sir, I'm sorry, the six oh.
The fifty-three thousand?
Right.
Is that specifically for one now or?
Well, that's not specifically for anything. That's money that we have set aside if something comes in there that we want to incentivize. As if they don't, that'll, that'll be a zero.
Yeah.
I move that we pass the, the two thousand twenty-five budget for the Eastland Economic Development Incorporated there.
I'll second that.
A motion from Richard and a second from Shirley to approve the economic development twenty twenty-five, uh, year-ending budget. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carried.
Sure appreciate it. And I did want to assure you that we are good stewards of the city's.
I know you are careful, so. Thank you, Tom.
You're doing a great job, again.
Really, thank you.
Item number three, discussion development board, they approved that this last Monday, and asked for us to sign off on that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Vicki Gradley and Terri Slade into the Economic Development Board, term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion from Shirley.
I second that motion.
Second from Carol, to reappoint Vicki Gradley and Terri Slade to the Economic Development Board. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, carries. Item number four, discuss consideration of twenty-twenty-five historic preservation grant application. We have three of these, actually. Anybody have any questions about any of those, let's see. You've got in your motion, Community Foundation fifteen nine hundred, the County Museum fifty-eight seventy-five, and Widmer's for fifteen hundred, and that explains those, and all three of those projects. Anybody have any questions?
No.
First one, excuse me, the Eastland Community Foundation, they're actually asking for eight thousand of that?
No, that's what they were asking, but under advisement from former city manager, Jeff Mr. Oznick and Leslie, they thought that we should just go ahead and give each one of them a hundred percent.
Oh, okay, so each one of these is for a hundred percent?
A hundred percent, yeah. Which makes the total asking of twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Where does this money come from?
Hotel motel.
What'd you say, number one, twenty-one thousand what?
Wait, no, I'm sorry. I have the wrong, I have the wrong number there, that was, that was the other.
Twenty-three thousand dollars, isn't it?
It would be thirty-five thousand less eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. There would be eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars left in our budget.
Twenty-three two seventy-five.
Yes.
What you got? All right.
I forgot to get that, you said it's a whole check, but I thought it was more than that, okay.
What is the investment property on the back of Widmer, what is that property?
It is the old, some of the old Stephen Company building here on Lamar Street, the office space where Scooter Martin used to be. Yes, everything's exterior, that's, that's the only thing that these grants can cover, is exterior.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion when you're ready.
I move we approve the historic grant application for the, for the sums as they are so written.
I'll second that.
A motion from Richard, and a second from Shirley to approve the grant application for Community Foundation of fifteen nine hundred, the County Museum for fifty-eight five thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars, and for James Widmer, fifteen hundred dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item number five, discuss consideration of application of Patty Woolham for place four, expiring term on the Eastern Economic, Eastern Historic Preservation Board. We've got a copy of her resume, maybe we're gonna call it application.
Ron Hobbs has served his two, three-year terms, and his term ends in this month, and we advertised, and Patty Woolham was the only half a company we received. And I think Patty would make a good board member.
Good choice of.
Okay.
Happy to get her involved.
Excuse me. I'll make a motion for of the Eastland Historic Preservation Board, term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion from Shirley.
Second.
And a second from Richard to appoint Patty Woolham to the Eastern Historic Preservation Board. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item number six, discuss, discussion and consideration of approval of reappointment of Julia Rod to place five of the Eastern Historic Preservation Board.
Julia's agreed to serve another term. Sucker.
Do you want to add any questions?
I move that we reappoint Julia Rod to place five of the Eastland Historic Preservation Board, starting, and starting her term September thirtieth, or ending in September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
I'll second the motion.
Motion from Richard, and second from Carol to appoint Julia Rod to Historic Preservation Board, place five. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and consideration of resolution twenty-two four dash fourteen, the resolution of the City of Eastland, Texas dedicating a certain zero point three-five acre tract out of the John House Surveyory Street, authorizing the mayor to execute an additional documents necessary for said dedication and providing an effective date. Tony, are you talking about this, or who is?
I guess I'll be the one to talk about it. Whenever we bought this, or had this piece of property given to us from the EEDI, it was basically a lack of knowledge to understand that we had another step to do to make this an actual public right-of-way, and not just a closed easement that belonged to the city. And we were asked about this due to the attorneys for Water Burger, who wanted to make sure that, that part of Terry Street was gonna be available for them to have, through traffic, come onto their property for their soon-to-be-built location. And with that, we realized that we had more steps to follow through on, and got with the city attorney. And she brought this up, we visited with the developer, who is gonna be bringing, or has prepared that location for Water Burger there on the east side of Dollar General, right there where the little mouse is moving, it's where they're gonna be building their location. And they're gonna have some traffic coming in and out on that west side, where Terry Street is. And so, this would then be officially making Terry Street open to the public, a flow you can drive on, I'm not sure what all else for public right-of-way use. And we ask that y'all approve that, so we can continue with the development in that area.
I thought we took care of this, and we did, the Terry Street was part of the grant.
Terry Street is part of the grant, but what this is officially doing is, whenever we got this from EEDI, and it was given to the city, it was just the property given over to the city. There was not anything that made it a public right-of-way officially. So it was, still showed to be like closed property of the cities. And so with this rating and everything, it was part of the, the grant project for the floodwater movement.
I think it was a motion made, mayor, to accept the property, but not to make it a street.
And that's what this is gonna do, is that's gonna create that and officially make.
When the EDI gave them the property, there was a motion made by council commissioners to accept the property, but not to dedicate it as a street, which is just what I was saying. But you're right, it is part of that process, in fact, it was in the grant before it was a street.
I know, that's what brought it started.
Kind of cleanup, yes.
And at the, and at the time, it, it was technically considered a private street, private drive.
It was private property before, they got a hold of it, they got a hold of it. We could, because it was on our, our list as streets.
Yeah.
But, but with this, this officially, this is basically correcting an error and inexperience on all of our part when we did this, by officially dedicating it as a road open for public use, a public right-of-way.
So we don't have, that's the cost of, we got to a map. So, right there, Terry Street, the one with the little angle. Now, we are gonna pave it from there, that straight north-to-south road, right there. That's all we'll pave, concrete, flume.
Correct.
Okay? So, is the rest of that street functional?
Yes.
It's right there by my.
And that's called.
I mean, it's, it's not changing what anybody's already using it for already. There are people traveling up and down it, but this would just officially make it a public right-of-way, and any of the people that are properties nearby can then have access to it for, just having to do a special.
They got mazes?
Yes.
Yeah, they got mazes.
Where's your car?
Yeah. Part of it, yeah, we parked that street.
I moved that we passed resolution twenty-two four dash fourteen.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion from Richard, and a second from Shirley to pass resolution twenty-two four dash fourteen, dedicate Terry Street as a public right-of-way, and authorize the mayor to execute any additional documents necessary for said dedication. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
You're authorized, mayor.
Motion carries, thanks a lot. All right, number eight, here we go. Discuss consideration to renew publicity and tourism agreement with the Cloud Museum. But none of this changed from what we proved this did financially or money-wise. So everything is for the next year. Entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the renewal of the publicity and tourism agreement with the Cloud Museum for twenty-four thousand dollars per year.
Motion from Carol.
I'll second that.
Second from Shirley to approve the tourism agreement with the Cloud Museum for twenty-four thousand dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Number eight, discuss consideration of renew publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastern County Foundation, that's for thirty-six thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastern Community Foundation, for thirty-six thousand per year.
Motion from Shirley.
Second.
Second from Richard, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Number ten, discuss consideration of renew publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastern Fine Arts Association for fifty-five thousand dollars.
This is all part that goes to the majestic.
That's what we do. On your mark. Get set. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastland Fine Arts Association for fifty-five thousand dollars per year.
Motion from Carol.
Second.
Second from Richard, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. At the time, y'all got a discussion, and we, you got something you wanna say. When I say, is there any other discussion, that's your opportunity for the one last call to have that discussion. Number eleven, discuss consideration of renew publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastland Chamber of Commerce for thirty thousand dollars.
I move that we pass the renewal of, new, we renew the publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastland County Chamber of Commerce for thirty thousand dollars per year.
All right, motion from Richard.
Second.
Second from Carol, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item number twelve, discuss consideration of renew publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastern County Museum, and that is for twenty-four thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastern County Museum for twenty-four thousand per year.
Motion from Carol.
Second.
Second from Richard, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. And number thirteen, discuss consideration of renew publicity and tourism agreement with the Eastern Center for the Arts Incorporated for twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars.
That's the lyrics.
I move of the Arts Incorporated for twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars per year.
Motion from Richard.
Second that motion.
Second from Carol, any other discussion?
Can you remind us what that specifically does for, is that the lyric or?
The lyrics.
The lyric.
The fine group in the back right there.
Okay.
Very busy group.
They are.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item number fourteen, discuss consideration of P and Z case twenty-four dash zero zero two, which results in the first reading of order twenty-four dash nine oh seven, changing zoning use designation of property. Okay, and that's the one we talked about in a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I move we pass the, the P and Z case twenty-four dash zero zero two, and it results in a reading of ordinance twenty-four dash nine oh seven, changing the zoning use for designation, of designation property.
Change that part from AO to C two?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Richard had made a motion. Shirley had made a scare. You're on the consent agenda next year or something, I don't know. City manager briefing.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
It's my turn.
Yeah, that's, yeah, boy.
Y'all got all your questions ready?
I know you do. Mayor and commission, this is the report for September sixteenth, twenty-four. Some of this stuff is a repeat of what you had on your last report. There are a few updates with the GLO for the street project. Those bids were approved, and the contracts are under review at this time. I'm hopeful that by the end of this week, we can move forward with that contract. It's kinda playing a part with the audit and the attorneys reviewing that, so that's what I'm waiting for there. Bid packet for the South Fork is, it's complete, they're waiting to bid out by November to have a December-through-March timeline, am I correct? There, okay.
That's right.
And North Fork is, the clearing is complete on North Fork, and all the streets were funded on the base bid, and the four, the four alternatives, they're, they believe that they're gonna have money for all fourteen listed.
Let me update, while you're on the pump, and on that deal that we found, we met an engineer, so she could meet the engineer last week. And we are still not finished with the buying of the houses that started this project three years ago, three and a half years ago. Those houses, that still is not completed, and going through the process. They, it's fine, it's just, it is a mess, and it is slow, slow, slow. We, in our discussions, you just mentioned the contract with the attorney back and forth. Engineers say you gotta do this, attorney says you don't have to do this. We've been doing these contracts and these bids for three and a half, four and five years on some of this, and all of a sudden, we go a different way, we're gonna do it, we think, we don't know. So hopefully, we can have that answered and out of the way Friday, because it was supposed to be done tonight, and they didn't have it ready, because it's a timeline deal. As she mentioned, these timelines and what we're doing, that's, and there's Monday, September sixteenth, the commission meeting, approve the twenty-twenty-three audit, we're doing that.
Friday.
What's supposed to have been done tonight, it's gonna be done Friday, the auditories confirmed that, and they said they will have that done, and all of this flows together, and there's all the dates they're trying to make work.
Yes.
It's a train wreck.
I understand.
It's moving forward, and Savannah has got total control of it.
Somewhat. And the next is Texas Water Development Board, that is the timeline that the mayor was talking about. That's going to be presented to commission this Friday at our noon meeting, and so once that's approved, that timeline can move forward, and so can this grant.
Will this timeline still be good if we do that Friday, have you verified that?
No.
Okay.
I, I communicated with Debbie Green, who is from.
Specialized public finance.
I used to be honest. Yes, from Vince's office. And I did email her, tell her that the date had been changed to Friday, and she communicated back to me, you know, thank you. And since they didn't send any other timeline, she said she would let all of her people know. And so since they haven't submitted another timeline, I'm assuming that it's gonna work.
Well, it's got, well, it's gotta change, son, because we're supposed to do something Thursday, nineteen. Well, it's got, well, it's got to change some because we're supposed to do something Thursday, nineteen. So that's got to be slipped a little bit. I'm just hoping the end of this doesn't change. They've got some flexibility in there. We'll see. Once we get it done, we'll get an update.
They have been unaware of this.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, and then the down pump sidewalk and the dam repairs, those are still the same. Cemetery website, Roma, um, has completed that and she will be giving a demonstration of that to y'all in the future. She's very excited. She's done a really good job.
Yeah.
We're happy.
Yeah.
Pretty neat. We look forward to your presentation. It's going to be actually good.
And the code enforcement, Terri has worked with, um, the software company through those issues. Um, he had a meeting today again, um, and we're hopeful that that's moving forward to interface all of that.
Oh, i- is that in a positive, is that movement in a positive direction? Are we getting, are we getting any traction? It's been a long time.
Getting better now. They're, they're, they're moving and, um, the document part, content management part is still in with the court right now. They haven't come to our side of it yet, so we've still got to have that. But as far as the basic program with ENCODE, hopefully by the end of this week. I have a, I had a meeting with them today. I have another meeting with them later this week.
If it appears to be bogging down, let's make a phone call. It's me and Savannah get on the phone and conference call or something.
Robin Reed was here last week. Savannah met her, that you talked to him about it. And I showed her some of the paperwork that I had got regarding the content manager. And she pointed out a couple of places that I needed to tell them that we needed to change some stuff. So I feel like they're, apparently their training is just backed up.
I understand that. I appreciate that. We blame everything on COVID. You know, it's, it's messed up the world and still people are not up from under that.
I don't know if it's. I don't know. I think they have, I think they've grown. They have new people. And I don't think, sometimes I don't think they're always all on the same track. I don't understand why we have to do this content manager in two steps. Why we have to do court first and then the rest of us. But they have court people that do the court stuff and then financial people that do the other part of it.
Okay.
So that's one reason that it's taking longer than I would have thought it would. Because they have to do it in two steps.
Well, okay, but if, if it's bogging down, if we can make a phone call, the city manager, the mayor, whatever we need to do, let's keep pushing. Let's get this deal done. Y'all been waiting for eighteen months?
It feels like it. I don't, Terri's, Terri's been, been sending emails and attempting to get in touch with them. And, you know, it's been, this person's out, this person's sick. And it's just, he's finally has, it's like he's finally talking to a human. And so he's trying to move forward.
I brought this up last time and I'll bring it up again. I'm assuming we still owe them money.
Yeah. We don't pay for our, uh, annual maintenance until after October first.
We don't pay for this until we get answers. Okay?
Yes.
Got it.
No, we don't, I mean, it's, if we pay them, we're done. It'll be much longer. You got their money, they'll hear you. And we really, this is ridiculous.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank y'all. And you're working on the water program. You were going to bring that up, I guess. You're getting some progress on the water program.
On the census.
On the.
On census.
The census program, I mean, the census reporting.
Yes.
Yes, it's really pretty cool. And I backed off of it a little bit since we went.
That's what, we need to start seeing those reports and knowing how to use it. So if we're ever getting this bind again.
Oh, yeah. Right now, what we're concentrating on is the leak reports and the meter problem reports. So.
That continuous report thing looks pretty interesting too.
Yeah, it is.
That's kind of, I feel like there's something about that we don't know. That's good. Keep it, keep it going. Keep it in front of us so we'll know. We need to make a phone call. Let's do that. These are, these longstanding projects.
And then, um, Old Rip Fest is October fifth. That's what I'm ending on.
That's good. Any questions for Savannah?
No. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next? Code enforcement.
Me again. I get to talk more. Um, Commissioners, Terry, uh, started August with sixty-two cases. He opened fifteen new ones, closed twenty-two. Cases at the end of the month. Out of those, um, cases, there were thirty-eight violations that were open and he closed thirty-four violations. We had four junk vehicles. Uh, citation was issued and that was for off-street parking, parking in the front or side yard and an R V use. Um, had, uh, what, two, uh, reported for back taxes. Six annual notices. We had fines assessed at an amount of seven hundred ninety-three dollars. We had one, uh, abatement case that was paid. That was three hundred fifty dollars. And we had filed a lien for two hundred fifty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, any questions over that part?
No, I would like to ask a question. What is the flea market or whatever you want to call it down the west end of town next to?
That's something that Terry's currently working. It's, it's, um. We're not sure if it's a home-based business or if it's just a garage sale. Sent, uh, the notifications out through mail. We're waiting to hear back from them. And it's one of those things where if you're a business, there are certain steps you have to take and certain places you can take stuff. If it's a home and you're having a garage sale where there are certain rules that come into play for that. We're trying to find out what they're calling themselves. We know exactly what we need to do with them. But, uh, you sent out the notifications, uh. Last week. Yeah. So we're waiting for, to either get the certification, uh, certified receipt back. Or, uh, if they haven't accepted it within ten days, then we can start to the next step in the case.
Good. We don't want to do this.
Yeah. We're, we're trying to get, it's one of those things where it's a home that's zoned commercial. And so it, it, we're trying to see what they call themselves.
You say a property zoned commercial?
Yes, sir. There, there are residential areas that were blanked. It's owned commercial because they were along the main drag. So that's why we have that overlap for some of them. So it may have been a residential use. It's always been a residential use, but it's zoned commercial. So we're just trying to figure out what do you, what do they call themselves? Are they a constant garage sale or are they a business? If there's a business, well, there's rules you got to follow. It's a garage sale, you can only do it so many times.
Okay, I got it. That's good.
Um, only other things, uh, we want to bring up is, uh, we, I say we, Terry's putting, uh, getting bid packet together. We're getting it reviewed by the, uh, city attorney for the condemnation, uh, demolition. So we can get that set up for, out for bid so we can, uh, keep moving positive on that. Uh, there's one property who's starting to work, uh, that was in a similar situation, but it looks like that might be going for taxes. Back taxes. So we may be able to have a different avenue to deal with that. And we've identified a piece of property here that we're, we're moving forward. That, that's a pretty, pretty tore up house that, uh, has just kind of been sitting there. And we're, we're starting to do that as our next, uh, goal to go after it, get cleaned up. And then also, uh, like I mentioned earlier, we're working on creating a new zoning district, a new zoning type that is, uh, kind of a varied, you know, varied types of uses depending on what it is. And like I said, that'll come to y'all before it's put into place. You guys will get a chance to, to yay or nay, put input, whatever you want to do with it. And then, like I said, one thing I, I've been kind of keeping quiet about, it's kind of a war secret in Eastland. But Whataburger has chosen a place here on the main drag and they're going to be, um, they've already given me their civil plans. And now we're waiting for the actual building plans to come in. And that was the reason why we had to do the Terry Street thing. So looking forward to that.
Okay, great. Keep moving. Keep moving. Anything else for Tony? Thank you, Tony. Chief Pitt.
Yes, uh, Police Department would like to officially welcome our new city managers, Savannah Fort and Mary. We're excited about having you here. Excited about you leading our team.
Thank you.
Nobody told me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Police Department answered three hundred sixty-six calls for service in, uh, August. We had thirteen arrests, sixty-one reports were generated, thirty-three s- agency assists, six hundred and eighty-five business checks. We were thirteen traffic crashes, fourteen dis- domestic disturbances. We filed twenty-five cases with the district attorney's office and zero cases on juveniles in August.
You say how many domestic disturbances?
Uh, domestic disturbances, we had twelve.
Okay, I thought you said fourteen. I'm sorry.
Well, I've been padding it a little bit. Traffic enforcement, we had a hundred and ninety-eight citations issued, four hundred and five warnings for six hundred and thirteen traffic contacts. On the animal control side of things, she wrote zero citations, five warnings. She answered seven. We had one substantial narcotics case, four arrest warrants. We had our job fair that we coordinated with the fire department, went really well. Um, and with the West Texas Central Government.
Call.
Call. And then, uh, Judge Holman and I went over to Ranger College and we taught an active shooter response for, for civilians to their faculty. Now, that's about all we had for August. It was regular morning.
We're good. Are you fully staffed now?
Yes, sir, fully staffed.
Good. Good day. Anything else for Chief Pitt? Thank you, Chief. Chief Williams.
Good evening, city manager, mayor, commissioners. Again, to parent the police department, fire department welcomes new city manager. We look forward to working with you to grow and develop our service to the community. Um, so for the month of August, the fire department responded to a hundred and nineteen calls. Uh, that's been, uh, quite elevated. Yesterday. Also, the fire department has broke nine hundred calls for, uh, twenty. The fiscal year of twenty twenty-four, uh, we will also kind of, we also track from January one, January one to December. We'll get that total also. But for the fiscal year, it puts us above nine hundred calls. Uh, for August, we ran three point eight calls a day. So we were running nearly four calls a day out of the house. Um, thirty calls, uh, it was seventy-six percent of those calls were inside the city limits. We ran ninety-four runs inside the city limits of Eastland, twenty-three in the county and two mutual calls. So seventy-six percent of those smoke detectors this, uh, month. And I hope to show y'all an increase of that as we move into the fall, fire prevention. We have a little bit more interaction with the public through our, uh, uh, fire prevention program. And hopefully we get some more fires, uh, smoke detectors installed coming up. Uh, we ran thirteen calls from, uh, ten o'clock at night to seven in the morning. Uh, and we did attend one structure fire this, this month that was in the city limits. That brings us to twenty-four for the year. And that's two, a little over two structure fires a month. So on average, about every fifteen days, we're responding to some type of fire in a house or building. Uh, we had one grass fire, one vehicle fire, sixty-six runs with the EMS service, uh, to assist medical events. And then the heat and people leaving their air conditioning car running and they accidentally locking their keys in their car. Fourteen false alarms and four investigations of some type of, uh, of, of, uh, call for an investigation. Two rescues and two. We have voted zero members on in August, but we do have that we're hoping to get, uh, members signed on. Uh, so that's our statistics. Um, we completed our first T C F P certification class through our fire training, uh, organization. And it was, uh, our B shift lieutenant Dylan Cogburn went through fire instructor one and was successfully passed. And so we do have our first class, uh, under our belt. Uh, this month, uh, in September, here not too long ago, we got to wash the fire truck for the first time since October, since August twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. So that was, uh, we're starting to knock the dust off and kind of getting back to, oh, Chief feels a little better about the way things look around the house. Uh, so, um, I did get a phone call from a, a guy named Bill Glass. We are up for our I S O, uh, rating for the city of Eastland. We'll be doing twenty twenty-five. So, uh, we're going to be working, we got several projects on the flight. And I would like to see our, our class four. And so we are going to attack some projects, um, this year to bring up our I S O. And that kind of brings me to this, Josh Dangle. Uh, he is our new A shift firefighter. He started on Monday, the ninth. Uh, he is still in his two-week orientation and will work his twen- first twenty-four hour tour, uh, on, on Monday, uh, next Monday coming up. I believe it's twenty-third or something like, twenty-fifth or something like that. He starts Monday. We'll get him in rotation. I can go back to fire chief hours and do fire chief projects. And we will be fully staffed along with the police department and serving the public. Again, so, uh, last little tidbit, uh, I briefed y'all on a project about a traffic control device on semen in front of the fire station. That project has been in the makes since January twenty twenty-one, when I assumed the fire chief role. I met with Tech Dot this month. That project, as I briefed y'all, has been approved and, and ready to go. We're waiting on the install. So I met with Tech Dot supervisor, I'm not sure his title, Jordan. And, and entering with the vehicles into the semen traffic wave, we will have a ability to control that traffic. We've had a few near misses. We have a lot of foot traffic that comes through there and bicycle traffic with the church. Uh, and so that's a priority to us to get that going. So hopefully Tech Dot will move forward on that project. Um, and that's it.
How will you control it? I mean, what are they putting in there?
So what it'll be, it'll be traffic control devices like red lights. And we'll be able to push a button when we leave, turn the lights red and let the traffic know that we're pulling out. Or when we come, we have to back, we have to pull into traffic to back in so we can stop the traffic. So what happens is the initial vehicle typically will see us pulling out and stop. The car behind them doesn't know why somebody's stopping in the middle of the road. So they either want to go around them or we've had some near rear end collisions. So those vehicles going around the vehicle, they'll, they, if, if they see the fire truck, then they might get into the sidewalk traffic. Uh, and we've had a couple of, of, of near misses and so that priority up for us. So hopefully we'll see that coming in the near future.
Uh, I S O rating, you say was four, why?
Yeah, and I'm not familiar with the subcategory, but, uh, we're a class four. So I'm, I'm hoping to increase the I S O rating. We're going to tackle a few projects that we can. Uh, I call it low hanging fruit. They, they, they're somewhat free when we start dealing with some of that stuff. But, uh, uh, but with the passing of the fire codes, uh, this time is going to help. Uh, and, and I'm going to work with Mr. Glass and ratings, and that's what we're going to attack and try to see if we can.
I'd like to jump in and say that, uh, building code adoption and updating also plays a factor in the I S O scores for communities. So.
What is I S O?
The insurance service rating. Yeah, so, so those, those lower ratings really benefit the community and the insurance.
When you increase the I S O, it means you go from four to a three.
You, yeah, the lower the number, the better. Yeah, so you that are carrying these class one ratings, they're, the citizens are truly benefiting on their premiums. And, and it's a, it's a huge amount of pride goes into that.
Sure does.
So.
I'd be curious about that why or how that, they've started making alphabetical.
The why, from what I understand, I can't go into detail on explanation, but it has to do with the water supply.
You had sixteen public assists and most of those were vehicle lockouts. What is, what do you do in that situation?
Uh, so we have the equipment to, uh, make entry into the majority of the vehicles that we encounter without tearing them up.
The police department used to do that, right? Used to. Y'all do it on my.
Well, that's.
See where we're going with this.
Carol from.
See where we're going with this.
Fire department just.
No, I just, I'm, I'm sorry. I stopped to ask that because it's a nice thing to have.
Well, so we, we took that on. It was a little, um, after a little bit of, uh, looking through the microscope at it. Because our goal is not to take over, uh, from private industry. Um, so I did some research and those, so that's the sort that, once we were not interfering with private industry, then we took that on as a customer service.
Wow. Okay. Did I get asked a chief question?
I have one question. You mentioned your open house on here.
Oh, yes, thank you.
What are the hours for that?
Uh, the hours have not been set yet, but it is, uh, October the twelfth. Uh, so we had the, the RIP, RIP festival, the first weekend. The second weekend is our annual open house. And we haven't really set the hours, but it's typically eleven to two or ten to.
Municipal court. You got anything else on that?
And her productions were up. Um, her collections were up end of month. For July was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand and this end of month for August is three hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And at the bottom, she, it's broke out. So city revenue was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven. State received one hundred and twenty-four, five ninety-five. I believe there's only a percentage. Um, once you meet that percentage of your collections, you don't get any more. The rest of it goes to the state.
Oh, really?
I believe.
Would you think that?
Okay. Okay. What is this, this, this report from, oh, they're giving us air quarterly.
Yeah.
Okay.
They gave us two orders.
Yeah. They gave, yeah, they gave us two. I had a question until I got to the second one that made sense. So I didn't ask.
The lyric is in the process of, um, back, uh, backdating volunteer hours. One thing we have to do, uh, money in time using volunteer hours at about twenty dollars an hour. And so it's critical hours this year today. Uh, it's just, it's mind modeling what these theater productions take. Uh, and so that was just an updated list.
Okay.
From, I know we're getting bigger all the time, but we're, we're working through twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. It goes two years today. So it also gives you a list of our, our building use days, days part unit printed. But right now, all I can do is a screenshot. So.
Hey, we've moved, please, I'm looking through here. I move with you.